Good evening and thank you for joining our board meeting tonight. Please help me open with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, in the physical liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On your day we have the roll call.
Trustee Grimm?
Yes.
Trustee Jessberger?
Present.
Trustee Clark?
Present.
Fiscal officers here, Chief Administrator, Superintendent Public Works?
Here.
Chief of Fire?
Here.
Chief of Police?
Here.
Code compliance?
Here.
And public works?
Here.
Thank you. Our next meeting is scheduled to be December 2nd over on the west side at 999 Chambers Road at 6:00 P.M. Please join us. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda with flexibility.
Second.
Trustee Grimm?
Yes.
Trustee Jessberger?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
And using flexibility, I am going to turn the rest of the meeting over to the vice chair because I will need to leave at 7:00 for a school function for my youngest daughter.
Hello everyone. So lovely to see you, all the smiling faces. Excited to be here tonight. Just to continue forward, we'll go ahead and move on to the fiscal officer.
Did you want to do item number five or general?
We are skipping that until the beginning of the year.
Okay. Any public comments? Go on to fiscal officer. Approval of the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Jessberger?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Grimm?
Yes.
Approval of payroll?
So moved.
So moved.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Jessberger?
Yes.
Trustee Grimm?
Yes.
And I apologize if I didn't get on the agenda. I'd like to do the October fiscal report. So October 1st, we have an overall fund balance of $12,620,898.77. Expenditures last month were $399,199. I'm sorry, that was revenue. leaving us with an overall fund balance of $12,444,258.39. I seek out a motion to approve the October fiscal report.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Jessberger?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Grimm?
Yes.
And I like and I appreciate the looking into 26 appropriations. We can discuss them. If we want to get more formal about it, we can get a second to have a robust discussion. Doesn't mean you need to vote on it tonight. What do you want to do? Talk about it and move for a motion?
Talk about it.
Okay.
You want to?
We're making a motion?
Uh-uh. It sounds like, my quick temperature was not in the mood to pass it tonight, but let's have a discussion. And then I hope we can pass them December 2nd.
I thought you and I made some notes. Harris highlighted some sections here. I guess, in the past, we've always started with the smaller funds just because the general is so complex. Oh, is this? Okay. With flexibility, we are going to pause the meeting. And we have an honored guest here that we are planning on going into executive session four. So please hold on our robust discussion of appropriations. I know how exciting it is. But first, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to enter into executive session for O R C 121.22 G3. Conferences within attorney of the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject to pending or intermittent court action. So I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Clark?
Yeah.
Trustee Jessberger?
Yes.
Trustee Grimm?
Yes.
And we are back in session at 7:03. Unfortunately, trustee Jessberger had to leave. So I would like to table our discussion on appropriations. But first, I would like to state that no votes were made and no decisions were made in that executive session.
So moving appropriations to the next meeting?
Yes.
Is there anything we can get out of the way to discuss tonight? Or, because I don't want to make edits to these on the floor. We only have two more meetings this year, December 2nd to December 18th. So I know you obviously can't speak for trustee Jessberger's concerns. Do you have any concerns? Or edits or?
I do, but I would prefer her to be here to hear them.
But this can always be edited, right? I mean, we can change appropriations.
And anytime you can edit.
So we could ask, you could ask your questions now. At least get yours out of the way. There still gives, this can be amended next year during the process. We just have to follow the procedure of getting it filed by the end of the year.
Do you want to wait till the other trustees here tell me your thoughts? And I'm not pretending it's your final word. If I have a fox layer, just, we can move on. I'm just wondering to get any quick edits before December 2nd.
Well, I guess I just have a couple of questions. Why did fires salary line item 2111-22100-0000 go from 1,300 in 2025 to 1,000? Why is it 300,000 less? I guess it's my first question.
I can answer that. We're using EMS revenue to make up that difference, 2281.
We just did it at the last meeting, right?
Yeah, we talked about that. My next question was on... The yellow one? Oh, there was a fund motor vehicles added for 65,000, I think. Is that, I don't see that motor vehicles was on last year. Is that for, what's that for?
For fire.
Yeah.
Replacing the chief's car behind the station car.
Okay.
We just did that last meeting. We just talked about that last meeting.
Sorry, misplaced my pen.
It's okay. I mean, maybe before the end of the meeting, if you have any questions, we'll be back. But if those were the top?
Nope, they're not. So buildings was 400,000 in 2025. And I realized that's being lowered to 200,000. Is there a particular reason why that decision was made?
That was actually lowered last year to 200,000.
You lowered it, you lowered it to 2,000 a year ago.
I guess, do we want to, do we want to keep it at that? Or was there anything that we want to do for next year?
I know you're the one that made the change last year. You took it from 400 to 200.
I did, but I'm not going to be here next year. So I'm asking if you think that that's going to be enough?
Should be enough.
Right now it's 200, going into next year. A lot is up in the air with that, depending on how many improvements happen at 999. But I doubt we'll do all of those next year. But I worked with all departments to make these appropriations. So that's why Mr. Medley and I landed on the 200,000 number.
Gotcha.
I think it's safe.
Okay. Are we going to be doing any... Are we going to be starting back with the road improvement projects? The resurfacing?
Yeah, the county and I, we submitted an OPWC grant. We're still waiting to get word whether that is done. We have funds set aside for that.
Yep, I see about 150,000. So hopefully that's enough. But obviously you can amend next year. But I was just curious. There's a capital outlay for the JEDZ went from 400 to 300,000. So I was just kind of curious why that big change happened.
That was another one that got reduced last year by 200,000.
Okay.
So that, what your budget you're seeing for '24 or for '25 is the uncorrected one for them two line items.
Okay.
We added 100,000 to that to maybe do some improvements with the businesses.
Okay. So, this is just for me. It looks like we had a separation of treasury notes and treasury bonds for, in 1,00810 and 820820. How come there's no treasury notes in the general fund for... Because I know we have a bond and I wasn't aware that we had a treasury note. So I was just curious what?
We have bond payment, which is the principal.
Correct.
And then interest payments.
Yes, but then, and here in the 2025 one that I'm looking at, and it may have just been an edit that I'm not aware of, but we had a $50,000 on notes. So I didn't know why that was removed.
In this year's numbers?
Yeah.
Look, I don't know what you're referring to. I know pay bonds from a notes line, but I can look as to why or what. And does an 810 code that's gone?
820. 1,0082082000.
What was the words again?
Principal payments dash notes.
Notes, okay.
For 50,000. And I was just confused as to why it wasn't here.
I don't know. I'll look into it.
Thank you. Why did the healthcare reimbursement go from 81,000 to 75,000?
Which one?
That's 1,19228000.
Were it projected, were projecting last years?
But didn't we have like a whole argument about how it needed to be 100% funded?
Yeah, it still is 100% funded, but that depends on family size.
Oh.
Some departments just assume everybody's going to have a family policy, which is a safe way to go. This is just more precise.
What is other salaries?
Code compliance?
What was that number again?
The 130 in the middle. It's a general fund.
130, 190, other salaries.
So everything with the 130 in the middle is related to code compliance. Like Mr. Medley had us wake up a variable line item fuel for the code compliance vehicle now that it's no longer an electric vehicle, which was the right and good thing to do.
Okay, and what is this 40,000 that's going up to 44,000? 1,110-500, other?
That's your good old other.
So that's just like in case?
Yeah. We can look at everything posted to any line item. That's probably the best report to do in detail. What do you mean other in your general fund? So the general fund as a whole has 4.2 million. And we're requesting going into next year, 44 of that 4 million be in other category. But overall, we used to pay mountains of money out of other. So I'm glad that we have that smaller. As best you can, you have that other small. A different question had come up, why that wasn't in the grant fund? And it's not the FEMA grant? And we can't have an other line item in the FEMA grant due to their laws? But rules of that regard.
Okay. And for 1,000-110-310 professional and technical services, what gets paid out of there?
The building inspection fees, lawyer fees. You could even do the mosquito spraying out of there. Basically, anything we outsource.
Okay, so I'm looking at this line item back in 2024. And it says that it was 95,000. And then come to 2025, it went up 35 or 25,000 dollars to 120,000. And then from, so 2025 to 2026, it's now 150,000? So that's a $60,000 increase in two years? And I would want to know why?
Two years ago, we had two different places we were paying that from. We're trying to put it into one spot now.
Where was the other place that it was paid from?
It also says professional and technical services. I don't know.
Can you find it, please?
I can't. I just know that we paid it from more than one place. We're trying to truncate it into one.
Well, I would like that answered for next. I want to know where it was.
This is Mr. Medley's budget. You should be asking questions to him.
I was. I'm asking it in general. So I want to know where was that pointed out to? So we can get an answer to that in the next session. I would appreciate it.
You're correct, Dave, but this general fund is developed from my office and the office.
Yeah, right. They work together.
There's a lot of numbers that are privately controlled, but I am not.
Yeah. So workers' comp, why is that being increased to 10,000?
Are you talking about the general fund?
Yeah. Like it went from 5,000 to 6,000 to 10,000, which doesn't sound like a lot, but that's a 100% increase in two years. So I was just curious why?
There wasn't enough appropriated previous years.
Okay.
That follows the group's business.
That was based off of the group.
Okay, and then the last thing that I would like to discuss is 1,110-122?
The salary for my assistants?
Yes. So I read your reviews of her that you have supplied. And you give her flying colors. There are absolutely no notes in any of them. All of this is say...
The first year I requested she help more pension reports.
Is exceeds expectations, exceeds expectations, exceeds expectations.
The first year I requested she help me more with pension reports.
I'm sorry, what?
The first year I requested she help me more with pension reports.
Yes, that was one. Otherwise, there's absolutely nothing in here. It just says that she's amazing and she's wonderful. That is not the feedback that I'm ever given from anybody else that works in this office. I have it on good authority that our leadership team has requested that nobody go to speak to her because she can be very difficult to deal with. And she just creates a toxic and difficult situation.
I would encourage you not to have personnel conversation on the floor.
So...
Unless you have firsthand knowledge.
That's going to be considered slander.
Rumors, if you're repeating what you hear from somebody else, you don't have firsthand knowledge. Therefore, you are spreading rumors that you have no idea whether they're true or not because you're hearing from somebody else. You need to be careful because you're risking my bond being sued by you running your mouth right now.
I don't think we have a bond, but...
We do.
We do.
Every elected official department has bonded.
It can be sued by what you're saying right now in a public meeting about somebody's personality, which I know you're lame ducking. You seem to really be throwing a lot of grenades lately.
Well, I don't...
This is not one that I appreciate because if she comes back and sues because of something you said in an open meeting and you have no firsthand knowledge that you actually heard it, you heard it from somebody else, you're spreading rumors that you had no idea whether they're true or not.
Well, I don't feel comfortable giving her a raise. And I would like that line item to be changed to 43,500.
Well, unfortunately, I don't think it's your, you have the ability to do that.
Making appropriations is a group effort. So your...
That is my...
Effort here says you want me to keep her at the same salary.
Correct. That's what I would like to say.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
Those are all mine.
Okay. Well, I'm glad we got some of that cleared up before December 2nd. Maybe we'll be able to pass this in December 2nd. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. On to committee reports.
For the Clinton Township chat at the November 14th free produce market, we had six pallets of food distributed to 528 individuals. Our next market will be December 12th from 4:00 to 6:00 P.M. Tomorrow night, the 19th, we're offering another free women's self-defense class. Starts at 6:30 P.M. here at this location. Thursday, the 20th, 6:00 to 8:00 P.M. is our next free health clinic. And then Friday, the 21st, we have a family movie night at 999 Chambers Road with the movie It's a Wonderful Life, with the movie starting at 6:00 P.M.
Is that what is that, this Friday?
It's coming Friday. Movie starts at 6:00 P.M.
And 999 over here?
999.
Thank you. Anything else? I don't know why the budget committee group got removed.
I removed it?
Nothing new.
There's nothing new in the education group either. I, for the 999 Chambers, we started looking into the agreement. I put up a...
What agreement?
The relationship agreement between the U V C A and us.
There's a written agreement?
We're in the process of writing one, yes.
Oh.
So I have, I sent a rough draft to Traly, Mr. Medley, and a representative of the U V C A. I got some feedback on it, so I need to make some adjustments to it. And then I will send it back out for review. And I'm hoping to present it forward on December 2nd at the next meeting, once I get a little bit more. And then Dave, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, our meeting was postponed from last week. But since our last meeting, I've got a price for extermination for the location over there. It's within my spending allowance, so I'll get with the F O office and see if we can get proper funding for that for next year.
You do. I do it under contracted services.
Okay. Then I reached out to a couple roofing companies. One company gave me three different estimates, a good, better, and best for the roof of the garage. I reached out to another company and they have not responded yet. So I will probably, if I don't hear nothing, will probably move forward with something at the next meeting to go and contract, have the roof repaired in the back garage. I think I've forwarded everything to the board.
If you told me, I don't remember. What is that garage? Right now it's being used for storage and it said you had to clean it out. What's the future hope to use that building for?
We use that for some of our police impounds, like the bicycles that we get time to get rid of.
All right.
Because we don't have storage on this side.
That's fair. That's fair. Okay.
And one thing I want to do with it is, our one building back here, we've got several lights, like solar lights and stuff for repairs and what have you in this. And our main, one of our buildings over here, we'd like to get that moved all over there so we can get our equipment back inside instead of using the dual solar bar.
Okay, that makes sense.
Is there any reason to make it larger?
No.
It's just right.
Good work.
I hope it belongs.
That's all I have for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shall I move on to administration?
Yes, I submitted my monthly report to the board. Just a couple of highlights here. Had several conversations with our attorney over the policies and possible CRA or agreements with the JEDZ for amendments. Spent several hours with our attorneys. Attended the union contract meetings with the police department. I reached out to Brian Clark with Columbus Water about the water replacement on Chesapeake Avenue. I think it's set sometime next year, trying to maybe coordinate some of the upgrades that needs to be done for one of the facilities over there. So we're trying to get that worked out while we can. Because that'll have to be with the agreement with Columbus for enlarging the water service and sewer. Before we started the leaf collection this year with the public works, I searched up and found the new hydraulic pump and controls for the up and down function of the leaf collection hose. And got that put on. It seems to be working fine. I attended the SUICO meeting about recycling totes. Get that back on track. They have new employee out there that replaced the old one. And it looks like maybe sometime in December, we'll be getting the new totes for recycling to the adoptive community. One issue was, we want to make sure we receive the invoice for them totes before the end of the year. And we did get that received. I took Omar with me to the Morphsey meeting, where the presentation of the OPWC grants was, spoke about project by project. So Morphsey can actually look at the projects now and move forward with the scoring. And we should be looking at them, grants being awarded here before too long, before the end of the year. We had an issue with dumping over Corin Avenue. One of the sections is kind of off the grid for the township. And the public works department, whenever they cleaned up some area resident township, but some of the dumping was on the city. And Dianne reached out and filed a complaint about that in the city. Omar completed these OSHA 30 trading and received a dollar raise for that. And that's into my report.
Congratulations. Very excited for you.
Next, I have a request, a request, your resolution employing the township attorneys on an annual basis for the year 2026.
So moved.
Okay.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Jessberger?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Then next, I have request a motion to amend the acknowledgement page of the employee handbook.
So moved.
Okay.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Grimm?
Yes.
And that is all I have.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it. And please move on to Traly.
I sent my report earlier. Read through real quick. For October 2025, division responded to 575 incidents, averaging 19 per day. Under training, we drew log 90 hours of training on various fire and EMS topics. Live fire training occurred here on several dates with Arlington and Columbus companies. Fire prevention, the fire safety inspector conducted 32 inspections, notified the building department of some structural integrity issues with an apartment building at 3811 Cleveland Avenue. Continues to work with them on that issue. 1719 Kenya Road had a Knox box installed. We secured keys for the Knox box. 3529 Cleveland Avenue was placed on fire watch for a day while the fire suppression system was down. Uh, thirty-five twenty-nine Cleveland Avenue was placed on fire watch for a day while the fire suppression system was down. And completed occupancy load calculations for several rooms at twenty-one hundred Agro Road, which is the Arena Christian Center. Uh, E M S coordinator reviewed three hundred and twenty E M S reports for Q A, Q I and processed for billing. He conducted several individual E M S run reviews, scheduled several medical residents for ride-alongs. Attended the O S U construction update meeting, which seems to be never-ending. Attended E M S conference at Morewich Fire. Under community outreach, fire prevention open houses were conducted on the fifth and eleventh. Both were well-attended. Uh, the fire department hosted free produce markets on the seventeenth and twenty-fourth. The O S U Quentin Fire Free Health Clinic was held on the sixteenth at this location. Uh, the Franklin County Public Health Child Adult Amusement Clinic was open on the fourteenth. Uh, crews were located at several locations for trick-or-treat nights. And I conducted twelve follow-up visits to residents that have recently used nine one one.
I even got a home visit. From my nine one one.
Well, stop acting out with your medical aid. You don't come to see our fire chief.
And just with flexibility, I know it's been all over the news, but there was a multiple fatality fire over by Reynoldsburg overnight. Three deaths for sure, possibly another, but it's that time of year where we start seeing an increase in home fires. There's different ways of heating homes that people will use and accidents happen. Just making sure that everyone is aware that we do give away free smoke alarms here. That's the number one thing that will save lives in homes during, during these winter months when these accidents happen. So if anyone needs a free smoke alarm, don't hesitate to reach out to us. Even if you're not in our jurisdiction, we'll make sure you get in contact with the proper authority to get you taken care of. All fire departments in central Ohio give away free smoke alarms. We don't want that to happen.
And they're also carbon dioxide protected?
We do not give away carbon dioxide.
Well, it's a good service. My household had received smoke alarms from your department and I suggest everybody do it.
And that's all we have.
Thank you. Chief Jones?
I did my monthly report at the last meeting, so I guess I was out of whack there. Um, just like remind everybody, heroes and helpers dates will be going at over at Target, their last December seventeenth. We are still taking names of families and names to help out with the children this year. Uh, several big donations have already come in from business partners and community members and to those people. We'll give them a big thank you when we complete, but we've already started that process. Uh, next I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty-six, twenty, twenty-eight F O P collective bargaining agreement. Uh, just for discussion, we had another meeting this afternoon. Uh, our attorney Julie Donan and the attorney for the F O P finalized everything that we had discussed. Uh, their members voted last week, uh, and Julie looked over everything we got with the fiscal office to show numbers of what we were looking at for their offer and we have come to a happy medium, I believe. Uh, so we would like to bring that before the board tonight for final approval.
Tommey?
Second.
Trustor Clark?
Yes.
Trustor Green?
Yes.
And we should have final copies of that, uh, revised contract by mid-December. And, um, on flexibility, I kind of put it up, I guess, this morning, but I didn't make the final draft. Like to make a motion to move five hundred thousand from the general fund to police for the Exxon contract that we approved at the last meeting. And then we'll have some numbers for a purchase order line for that contract because it's multi-year. Uh, but that will take care of most of that. Because if you remember, we have some money coming from the state and the credit I got earlier. We're going to go.
Thank you.
And the last thing I have, kind of much like.
Did you, wait, we need the motion.
We gotta move in second and board on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Requesting the motion to move five hundred thousand from the general fund to the police.
Tommey?
Second.
Trustor Clark?
Yep.
Trustor Green?
Yes.
Now you can.
Oh, now, just a little information. No, just kind of like Brian with the fire department smoke alarms, uh, just to put an announcement out there. Uh, we've had the holiday free shopper season start at Lennox today. We made a couple family arrests earlier today. Uh, please keep your packages hidden in the cars when you're out shopping. Don't leave firearms in your vehicles. Uh, and when you're out shopping, just be aware of your surroundings, uh, and, uh, uh, hopefully, especially at Lennox, I know it's going to take a couple of days to work with the sheriff's office. We'll be watching.
Always watching.
Always watching. But yeah, just high packages, no firearms in the cars. Put those things up. We've got people breaking into cars. Uh, and so suddenly each other folks are getting those out on the street. So just the holiday season reminder. That's all I have.
Thank you. You guys sat out of order, so I guess with flexibility, uh, Mr. Quigley?
Submitted my monthly report. Uh, briefly, just want to go over, we had a property in the twenty-nine hundred block of West Royal Grove. There's actually an easement behind there that belongs to the township. They just stored about eleven, twelve wrecked vehicles back there. We've sent them letters on that. So far, they've removed six of them. There's still some more to move, but I'm working with them. And also found out although the business had been there operating for thirty years, it is not zoned correctly for the type of business that they're going. So they were told who to contact the Franklin County and how to go ahead and proceed to get that zoned correctly. Um, moving forward with the five oh five resolution for the property on Lainer, we did. Property owner refused to go pick up the certified letter from the post office. So I checked and we were about to post it, so I posted it at the property yesterday and took a photograph. They have seven days to get back in touch with us. I also got a call from the company that provided the loan to the property and they were very concerned about what was going on with that. And they actually spoke with the property owner who wouldn't speak with me. And he said, lock this behind, I'm cutting the grass. And I explained to them that it's not just a grass. There's three optimal vehicles. It's all over the road and, excuse me, if he doesn't move forward, then the township will go ahead and we'll get a contractor going and clear all that out and all that will be assessed against their property taxes. So we're still moving forward off of that, so we're probably about another month away before we actually take any real action. And at that point, when we go to do it, we would ask the police department to come along with us to make sure that the person understands that we're legal, we allow them to be there and all the way they're going, so we don't have any conflicts. Um, and lastly, uh, where the railroad tracks are on Innis Road, um, there's a homeless encampment back there that's on the city of Columbus, but I went ahead and notified them about it. I'm pretty sure it's the same individual that used to be camped out at the Amco Transmission Lot and I wanted to let them know. So they're in the process of reaching out to him. They have an outreach program that they go check on people that are living there to see if they need any, you know, help with someplace to live or if they need health concern, uh, healthcare or any of those type of things. So they're moving forward with that. And that's just part of the partnership, the partnership that I've developed with Columbus Code. Um, just to work with them and to help them because they can't be everywhere just like I can't either. So just wanted to let you know that we're working on that.
Thank you. And I will go ahead and put the floor to Public Works, Mr. Nodkamp.
Just a couple of little things here. Uh, the crew picked up twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty tons of brush from around the township. Uh, the crew picked up a total of forty-two, two weeks' worth of leaves, which is equivalent to three quarter truckloads. Um, Dave and I attended the K H Road Stormwater Reconstruction Meeting. And lastly, I coordinated picking up what ended up being about over sixty tons of salt from the Otis Transit Center, who was kind enough to donate it to us. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. And to the lovely Community Affairs Representative, Ms. Mathers?
Thank you. Um, the blood drive, just to dovetail on that, the sixteenth, um, that Tuesday is actually Township Meeting Day at nine ninety-nine. The blood drive is going to wrap up at six. Um, Assistant Chief McCoy, um, is, uh, going to delegate the wrapping up of the blood drive to Sergeant Reeves. Um, we have some, uh, great marketing materials that we just received, uh, regarding the blood drive. So we're getting ready to push all the information out on our website and social media and it's also out in the lobby as well. Um, the blood drive was not marketed the same as earlier this year where we did a competition with other townships and municipalities in and around Franklin County. So we, we, meaning Assistant Chief McCoy and I, decided that we're going to do the Battle of the Badges and, um, Chief Fraley, will you accept the challenge of the Battle of the Badges of police versus fire for the blood drive? So you can maintain your crown. And I have a wonderful picture of Sergeant Reeves on here as well.
Police on the last one.
Yeah, we won the last one.
Oh, well, by first of them.
That's the accountant.
Will you, uh, take the crown from police, the challenge to try to take the crown from police to, uh, to win the blood drive this year?
Anybody, the sheriff's department, walk, go ahead.
So, uh, just putting it out in the universe. So, um, that again is, um, starts at twelve fifteen on that Tuesday and through the sixth. Um, they do ask the choose call and schedule appointment. All the information is on the flyers. Uh, that time of the year rolled upon us fast. Again, holiday activities. Um, we are planning on doing the holiday home decorating contest. Um, got some really colorful, busy flyers for that. Um, going to have the residents submit their entries by December twentieth. That way we scoop up all the last-minute procrastinators like myself, who sometimes don't decorate until the week of Christmas. Um, so they can participate as well. Um, then we're also going to be doing the judging, um, by, uh, December twenty-second. We're going to announce the winner for that. So we have flyers that I'm getting ready to push out as well on social media and our website. Um, again, same as last year, we have the kids coloring contest. Got a new coloring, uh, page for the kids as well as the letters for Santa, which means that Omar, we're going to need all of our goodies from storage drug out. So we can, um, get that all ready and set to go. And then, of course, I have a template for the kids as well to download for their letters to Santa. The, uh, information regarding the smoke alarm from Chief Fraley, if you want to email me a follow-up on some language, I can put together a post for that to remind people because we are doing the campaigns for the holiday awareness. All things candles, cooking and fire safety and, uh, Chief Jones, the same with you, with your, um, message on holiday shopping and not to keep the firearms, the packages in the car and beware of your surroundings. If you just want to put something together, shoot me an email. I can massage it and push it out for our holiday messaging for safety. And then last thing, we do have some wonderful marketing materials for the, um, the new recycling bins. I don't think I've ever been so excited about a recycling bin, but, um, we got all the information for that. And we also have it on our website as well. And I think, I think that concludes the community affairs portion of the program. Any questions?
Uh, oh, go ahead.
I had a question about the recycling bins. I'm excited about them. Do we know when we're going to be able?
End of December.
End of December. Christmas is going to come by Christmas.
Yes. Well, we're, we're going to get them either way that we're going to get them.
Okay.
Do we have to pick them up?
Nope.
They will deliver them, but then we have some extras that we'll need some room back here to store them. We may store somewhere on triple nine also.
Are they going to want to pick up the old ones?
The old ones, they, we can.
We have a plan for the old ones. They can either keep them. They can keep them in their garage to use to put the recycling in there. Uh, or we're going to talk about having them, if they absolutely don't want them, they can't just, to stick them out on the curb. They can't put them in the new one. We're going to talk about maybe them, dropping them off here.
Yeah, drop them off here or we can pick them up or whatever.
Awesome.
And these will be the red bins or the lids, so hopefully there's less, um, bills going down the street.
Correct.
Yeah.
But if we rent ours from them, like we pay that, they'll pick those back up.
Correct. Yep. Any bins that you rent and stuff, they'll go back. We, we started a new contract at the first of the year.
Wow. That is interesting and complicated.
Excited stuff.
It was a great use of the arc plums. It was the last of our American Westy plan. Great.
Um, any other questions about community affairs? Yes?
I just want to remind everyone, the office will be closed Thanksgiving, February twenty-seventh.
Any other questions, concerns, rumors that I can remember or not? Any appreciation?
I want to thank Omar co-compliance officer, um, friends with a African-American person and he felt he wasn't getting good service, um, down in the county office. But he had great accolades for, um, Dan Quigley and feels very well-respected and heard and things are happening for him. So it was just really great to see my text message. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have appreciation. The fire department went on Sunday to run the five K um, for the Skechers Hot Chocolate Run. But I'm an overachiever, so I decided to do the ten K, which started an hour after the five K was over. But Chief Fraley stayed, um, and waited for me in the crowd to congratulate me from while I was running. And then he stayed after to check on me and make sure that I was okay, to make sure that I felt included and appreciated. And I really thank you for doing that. It was very sweet.
No problem.
I was the only person remaining, so it was very thoughtful. Thank you.
If there is nothing else, then, yes, nothing else? Um, then I would like to make a motion to enter an executive session per O R C one twenty-one dot twenty-two G one to consider the appointment, employment or compensation of public employees.
Okay, second.
Trustor Clark?
Yeah.
Trustor Clark?
Yes. Seven forty-five.
Do we have to put an alarm on this part? Do we have to put an alarm on this?
All right, five A M. It's over.